Calling the March 14th Special Meeting of the Pensbury School Board. Oops, thank.
That's why. Calling the March 14th, 2024 Special Meeting of the Pensbury School Board to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise? Ms. Steffi, will you please do the roll call? Ms. Abresha?
Here.
Dr. Delwich?
Present.
Mr. Canaan?
Here.
Ms. Lamming?
Here.
Ms. Polsky? Mr. Prokopia?
Here.
Dr. Steer?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Waldorf?
Present.
Mr. Massengill? Mr. Ali. Eight board members present.
Thank you.
Welcome back. We are coming back to do a second round of interviews with our two architectural firms. So, thank you for coming back. Tonight will be slightly different. Tonight will be slightly different. We are going to go around again and around robin, allowing each board member to ask questions. This evening, if there is a clarifying follow-up question to their question after the architects respond, then they'll have a chance to ask that clarifying question. And then, if we make it through all the board members, we can go around again. We hope to get around more than once. We're going to start the evening with public comment. I'm starting public comment at 7:38, and the first speaker is Mr. Andrew Dell.
Andrew Dell, Falls Township. I just have one question. What is the dollar amount that is required to have a referendum for a vote on this new school? Whether it's a dollar amount per student or a gross dollar amount in total, I'm not really sure. I've heard a lot of numbers floated around, but if anyone could answer what the number is, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
The next public speaker is Mr. Robert Abrams.
Robert Abrams, Lower Makefield Township. I'm going to make the same comment that I made with Penwood and the same comment I made for Draw Bame. I can do this for cash. All I have to do is properly manage Pensbury School District so that it mimics the Nishamy School District. Because the difference in budgets is $39,900,000 per year, and the difference in students has gone down in the last 11 years from 1800 to 98. Now, go multiply that by five years, $40 million, that's $200 million. Before the doors are open, I can have it paid for. But of course, we're going to continue to mismanage, and we're continuing to funnel as many dollars to the unions as we possibly can, so they can donate to Steve Santisario. It's going to stop, and it's going to stop now. School Dish has been withholding the RFP from me, for these guys, so that I didn't know what it said. Absolutely, lots of class. Problem is, it's all low. Dr. Smith, please update your resume, and please get out of here. The lies, the deceit, the deception are unbelievable at this point. I'll expand on this next meeting. This is the worst I have ever seen Pensbury. And it rubs off on the kids, and it rubs off on the community, and it's going to stop. So, the public knows, two complaints for Sunshine Act violations were filed yesterday. Need to know if the $250 million cap that supposedly was given to these people was for just the building, or for the building and the ground prep. You need to file forms with Department of Education. There are D-forms '02, '03, '04, '20, '21, '22, '23, and I believe '24. Nothing's been filed. Nothing! Department of Education doesn't even know you're building building. According to the gentleman that has to review it. You people are unbelievable. The fraud, the deceit, the deception is at an all-time high. You make Joe Biden look like an angel. The field started, let me get to Crabtree here. Crabtree put up their school they built in Philadelphia. Nobody here bothered to even read what was on the bottom. It was at $298 a square foot, and gentleman told me January to March of 2022 it was finished. So, it's about 18 months ago. I believe, at this point, and Mr. Winch over here should be able to tell us, because I asked for the square footage, I think our rehab cost at BAME is more than $298 a square foot. And I'm going to find out what the number is, even if I have to put in an RFP for it. If they can work at that number, sign them up. You're never going to get this without referendum anyway. That's pretty much a given at this point. Because not one of you knows what is going on. I had to give you the information, and you still didn't read it, and you still don't know what's going on. Cost of the field, I just saw, on the internet, was supposed to be $6.1 million. It is now over $14 million. The article that I saw, was sitting in the other meeting, was BAME started at $30 million. It's now, as of the last facilities meeting last week, $42.2 million. 29% over budget. Field is 242%. And you're going to come in here and tell us? Let's, since I only have a couple of seconds here, let's figure out Mr. Burden's real numbers. The original amount that he asked PFM to draw up for was $367,480,000. How close is that number? That's the real number of what this is going to cost. How do I know? Because take the $400 million that it's going to cost for 3,300 students at North Penn that they voted down, and our $3,000, you take off 10%, that's $360 million. Really close to what he started asking for, wasn't it? If you want to do it again, and you want to take it down to 2,800, it's $339,200,000. It's 15.2% less. That's the real number. That's what it's going to cost the taxpayer in cash. Now, get it straight here.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. And the final speaker tonight is Mr. Tim Daly.
Tim Daly, Lower Makefield Township. I'm going to reflect, you know, some of the same comments that Mr. Abrams has presented. Think this RFP from the get-go has been a pretty much a mess, I think is the best way to describe it. Everything has been done in secrecy, significant lack of transparency to the public. But more concerning is to find out that not one of you nine school board members knew what Act 34 was three weeks ago. It's extremely troubling. $250 million project, and our superintendent didn't sit you guys down and educate you. So, I didn't expect any of you to know anything about Act 34. I didn't either. But he did, and he didn't tell you anything, and that's a problem. So, there's a question of falsification of costs. Five estimates that came from PFM. So, if you guys haven't read the news, PFM caused millions and millions of damage at Avon Grove, at Colonial, and at Upper Marion with poor advisement on bond trading. So, be careful what you guys are voting for, because it cost $25 million to Upper Marion on the gamble that they recommended. So, you know, and then, you know, with the numbers as Robert brings up, you know, just tonight in the finance meeting, we have a copy of the auditor's report that was received in an RTK yesterday, and the numbers that Kimmy presented today in the finance committee don't match up. So, are we changing numbers after they're locked and loaded by an auditor? Think this board should start diving in onto that and understanding what's going on under Dr. Smith. So, I didn't waste my time objecting that this is another violation of PA Sunshine Law, because Ms. Aaronson is just going to say it isn't, and we're wasting our time. But you guys did not provide a proper advertisement. That's why there's nobody here. Exactly what Dr. Smith wanted to happen. Nobody here. I talked to Tom Soufield, he never got a contact. So, exactly, Dr. Smith, I want to hear from you tonight, before this meeting is done, to confirm you're not in violation of PA Sunshine Law of exactly which advertisements you did to the community that you're required to do 24 hours prior to this meeting. In addition, there was no attachment in RFP. An email was sent to Dr. Smith 48 hours ago to include it, because we believe that that rightfully has to be done under PA Sunshine Law. Because otherwise, how do we as a public participate when I have to guess on the numbers? Now, I've been through 200 of these RFPs in my life, because I pitched them, and I've been on the other side of being pitched too. So, you can kind of figure out who's going to be more costly, who's going to be less costly, based on the words that come out of their mouths. Because what I've learned in running my business is, is there's hours of human resources that you put into what you do. TR knows it, because he's in a similar kind of business. And you can figure out the number of hours, what the price is going to be, and what the end cost is going to be. So, it's very clear, there's two differences in cost that are coming out of this, and I can basically do the math in my head, because I've been doing it for 25 years. So, we have two very good firms that you guys came down to the finals. So, I do think you picked the best two. But as you watched those presentations last week, there was a radical difference in who you will be working with. So, what bothers me most, that what we're sitting in front, is I have not heard from Dr. Smith's lips, what is our objective that we are trying to achieve in this process? Because without an objective, how the hell are any of you going to vote? You don't even know what you're voting for, because this man didn't provide you an objective. That is the primary focus of every RFP. Now, I could be wrong. Maybe there was an objective on the RFP. But Mr. Smith made the decision unilaterally to deny Robert from being able to get his RTK and see the RFP, even though it only took two minutes to zip it up. He doesn't have to redact, there's nothing he can do to change anything. It's a two-minute project. He told, "You've got to wait 30 days, because we don't have enough resources." I think it should pose a question to all of you. Why is Mr. Smith withholding that RFP from the public, and what does he not want us to know?
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Welcome back. Thank you for coming back out. Lynda, are you there with us?
Lynda, can you talk again? It says you're on mute.
I apologize for the technical delays. Lynda, are you there? Well, I'm going to welcome you while we're getting the technical difficulties squared away. Thank you for coming back this evening for a second round of interview questions. Tonight's going to be slightly different than last week. We are still going to go around the table and around robin and ask questions that the board members have come up with on their own. And this time, if there's a need to ask a clarifying follow-up question, the board members will have an opportunity to do that. We hope to get around more than once, if possible. So, the first question comes from me. So, we have two very qualified and excellent firms, and your bid came in significantly higher. And so, we just want to know what value-added that extra fee comes, will bring to the table to explain the difference.
Sure. Thank you. Again, thank you for having us back. We're pleased to report the server at Cosmos recognized us. So, that was good. And it was much easier to travel without the model, so thank you, Jamie. So, in terms of fee... In terms of the fee, I certainly don't know the dollar value we're discussing, but let's talk about value in terms of the fee that we submitted, which was based on our understanding of the level of effort for the project. In terms of value, I'm going to promote that we are the most experienced firm, and I think with this size and scale of projects specifically, I think what you've asked this evening also, in terms of the core team, the three of us that sit before you are the team that has worked on the largest projects in the firm and within the state of Pennsylvania. So, our leadership, our experience on this scale of a project is significant. The ability to deliver a more cost-effective project and value to the school district translates to dollars per square foot. How the architect designs the building, and we talked a little bit about that last time, the compactness of our floor plan, how we designed that building, and how we achieved that, which we can talk a little bit more later as well. In addition to, you know, when we talk about our cost-effective design, we're also talking about LEED-certified projects. So, they're attaining a very high level of energy performance and efficiency and our delivery method. I think in terms of the fee, high level too, at this state of a proposal phase, it's really, I think, intended to be a barometer, and I don't mean that to dismiss it's not a small number. It's a very large number, the size of the project and the fee. But again, I think that our experience, our staff, the resources that we have in our office, 80 staff is a significant number when it comes to the meetings that we'll incur. And I think actually, Dr. Steer, you'd mentioned, talk about the collaboration process. One of the things that we can bring to the table, when we have presentations to the community to discuss the progress of the project, it's not uncommon for us to bring a half a dozen people to the meeting. So, after presentation, all of those people are working as primary assignments on their project because of the staff that we have in our office and the resources. So that when they go to a table perhaps to address a question about the site design, or the building program, or the building design, or perhaps sustainability, you're talking with a 25-year, a 23-year, and a 30-plus-year veteran. So, those years of experience translate to that as well. And I think the final thing I'll mention too is, we would fully anticipate to go through the B-101 contract agreement. There were terms stipulated in the RFP, but there's still another process to take the architect and the district through that contract negotiation. We're more than willing to negotiate a fee that's commensurate with the effort of the project, and also the scope. We're still talking about some pretty significant moving pieces in the program in terms of an auditorium. You know, when you start talking about a $6 to $8 million decision, those are things that would impact the fee. So, I would certainly entertain the concept that we would go through a negotiation to discuss that with the district as we move forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I'll continue with the financial angle. So, I know we've gave you a budget, we have an idea of how much this will cost, and similar question like before, how comfortable are you with that budget? And I know you had a proposed design as an example. Is that based on the idea of the budget that we have as an example? I have one follow-up, but I'll let you answer that.
Sure. So, when we prepared our design, and the RFP was very clear about what some of the initial parameters of the project would be. So, we had a pretty good guide for understanding what Dewey felt the cost should be. But because of the volume of projects that we do, I think we shared last time, we've completed 55 secondary projects just within the last 10 years. Actual bid results on projects are usually what we will use. And then, also, Jeff shared last time, we've got a project within 20 minutes of here in Center City, Philly with our new elementary school. So, there are cost escalation factors built into that. We're very comfortable with the budget, which is why I think we showed the upper end of the square footage in our budget, because we felt like that additional square footage is of value to the school district, and we thought that was achievable.
Last time you spoke about, I think your words were "designed to budget" and controlling the scope and everything to the budget, and I think you had a, like a graph that you were sharing on a slide. I couldn't, I asked, but I couldn't find that anywhere else. How recent is that? Is that like a public graph that compares how different firms do? You know the graph I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah. That was the graph that we were showing the state average, and where Crabtree, Robin Associates projects, that I think my last question or comment that I made and shared with the board was, many of those projects that we highlighted that were shown as kind of orange dots in that time scale, in fact, were LEED-certified, and several were LEED Platinum projects as opposed to the state average. For quite a long period of time, the Department of Education used to issue Report 30, but around 2015 or so, about the time the moratorium came into place, the state stopped recording that. But I would refer back to our core philosophy of this firm has not changed as a result of the state's, whether they choose to record that data or not. So, that is why we feel comfortable with the budget and really demonstrate the ability to, it isn't something that we've just discovered how to do in the last five years. Since the mid to late 90s, we've consistently been able to find ways to design the most cost-effective buildings. And I think the way we manage the budget and design to the budget is the way we approach the project. We very much see our marching order when the board establishes a maximum borrowing for the project. Our job is to come back to you with recommendations on how to achieve your entire program, talking with facilities about the types of systems that you're looking, IT with those types of items as well, and making recommendations on how we can get to that budget. We shared the State College example also, that had a significant amount of alternates that we spoke about last time, to allow the board to make decisions after the bids have been received, but in a competitive environment, so you know that you're getting the best possible value for those items. And again, that notion is to try to protect the base bid project, if you will, to ensure that that project can go forward, and the board has the ability to adjust alternates after bid receipt.
So, you talked about a State College, the school there. Thinking that example, from your initial contract till the completion, did your price change a lot? Was it pretty the same?
Our fee?
Your fee, yeah.
One of the things that the two founding partners of the firm have always promoted in public education, a very different philosophy for fee that other architects typically do not follow. Most you'll find a percentage of the construction cost, in some cases, you'll find a percentage of the bid results. We've always decided that it's in the best interest of the process that our fee is fixed, perhaps somewhere around schematic design or the end of schematic design, when we fully understand the scope of the project, the schedule, and the program. And I'll use the auditorium again as another example. Once we realize that is in there, we're perfectly comfortable, and many of all of our educational clients, we fix our fee at that point. It's a fixed fee. And if you recall, Tracy, our interior design director, last time mentioned, the rationale behind that is if we're specifying, if you choose to want to have terrazzo in the project as opposed to an LVT flooring material, that can significantly change the cost of the project and the architect's fee. At that point, our fee is already fixed. We're still designing a floor-finished material. We want to be able to come to the table with recommendations that, you know, when we're making them, they're on your behalf, and not because they might impact the architect's fee. So, we're quite accustomed to a fixed fee throughout the duration of the project.
So, the State College, the fee you started with is the fee you ended with?
Go ahead. I was heavily involved in that, in that fee as the project evolved. Actually, all three of us were. Sorry. The fee did modify throughout the design, but a little bit, very close to what John just spoke of, when major changes would occur to the project. And I think that's something else to be clear of, is having a team that, when you administratively, as a board, as a community, make changes to the project, for instance, add a gymnasium, which we saw what happened at State College in the middle of the project, that you, you know, immediately have a conversation of, hey, the scope of the project is changing, the scale, we can add this if you want, as a board and administration, bring this into the project, but it is going to, it's going to adjust both the cost of the work, obviously, and then also the fee for the architect-related. And that happened, I think, about three or four times along the process. But as John mentioned, when we got to a point where we locked down the final program, then the budget was set, and at that point, the fee did not adjust moving further. And you need to be flexible with that. An example was, John mentioned about the community meetings, we would very often, we would have six to eight people at meetings, and we'd have a, we'd present to whether 200 or 500 people, and then we would break out in individual sessions. And, but we tried to be flexible and hearing the comments from the community, and then taking that back to the board and the administration. And one of the things that came out of that one evening was, we had spent a month preparing, we thought performing arts was really the focal point that the community was concerned about, and really, the board and administration. We got to one of these meetings that night, and 120 people showed up to talk about physical education, and how we had the gyms organized. And so, I mentioned that specifically, because from that conversation at the community level, then we made an adjustment to the program, and then that did adjust the budget, both for the overall project, and then the fee for the architect. And there was a flexibility with that, but then also responsibility of having that immediate conversation, so everybody understood, you know, we're not just going to add a couple classrooms or a gym and expect... classrooms, or a gym, and expect prices to stay where they're at. So.
Thank you. Just a question, in the RFP, I believe it was a percentage, correct? Dr. Smith?
Yeah.
So the percentage that you put in your, in your RFP, you're saying that that's not actually the number? And like, how do we compare that at that point? Like, how do we look at that if you're like, well, it's not the percentage, it's something else?
So let me back up. There are methodologies to arrive at that. You can back into the number either way. We didn't look at it as a percentage overall in the initial phase of it. We went through the effort, and basically, when we arrive at our fee, you can back a percentage in. I believe it's just below 5%. But that's based on the design, and not based on where the bids might come in. A percentage of the bids would result in, you know, hypothetically, when, if a project comes in $10 million over budget, and this is kind of one of the core philosophies of our firm, we don't think that a client should pay the architect additional fee because they missed the budget by $10 million. So by fixing our fee and designing to the budget, is where I think that kind of sweet spot is. But there is a specific number in the fee proposal of what that percentage translates to in terms of dollars, so you could compare dollar per dollar that way. Did that answer your question?
I think so. Awesome. Let me ask you this. So it seems like, when we're looking at these designs, we're looking at designs that are very similar to other schools, and sort of taking into account sort of what is new, and what is cutting-edge in education, I guess, for design. You know, however, sometimes those things fall out of favor, and we see this in schools that are 20 years old, the things that were designed 20 years ago aren't being used. And so, you know, and all of those things that we're putting in have a cost. So how do we avoid, you know, because obviously, you know, one of the things is you get feedback from students now. Students now have a completely different perception than people do 10 or 15 years ago. And what's, what is, what people are looking for now, is not what they may be looking for in 10 years, and we've put money into that, you know. How, you know, obviously, that's a cost that frankly, it looks like could be a significant cost, and how do we avoid that, you know, and how would you avoid that?
I think we're going to want to all say something about this quickly, so I'll be quick. One of the things that I think speaks to our experience is how we have designed so many secondary projects in the last 10 years. We have seen that evolution, student lockers, casework inside classrooms. Boy, 10 years ago, if there was an empty wall space, it was looking to have it occupied with casework, fixed casework, which is very expensive. Over the past few years, seeing how teaching has changed, and the student is more engaged, and more flexible, classrooms need to be designed to be more flexible, to be used for more than one use. You know, building in less casework, and making some of the casework mobile is one solution. And studying those trends, and bringing other, what other districts have done, to show you examples, because I can almost assure you, if we talked about one individual item, we would all have a difference of opinion. And the, our objective is to bring that information to the table and say, here's, you know, at Penn Manor, their 450,000 square foot high school, they decided to do away with lockers, and this is how they solved it. The next district might not want to do that, but we can bring that experience and show completed examples of how not to overbuild the project, and to keep it flexible and adaptable.
Good evening again. So to answer your question, yeah, I think the key that we see is, is the sense of collaboration, right? As architects, we're, we want to meet with you, we want to hear about what your needs are. While we understand architectural interior design trends as designers and architects, really our role is to bring that to your attention, give you the facts, understand your specific culture in your school district, in your school, and help you meet your educational goals. That's, that is really our intent and our goal. So we can show you, you know, for example, what's trending, what has been trending for the past five to 10 years is learning stairs. Those are stairs that people sit on, that maybe go from, you know, one level to another. Some school districts love that, some really do not want to see that at all. So part of this really is us partnering with you, excuse me, understanding your culture, your needs again, and having those frank conversations. There is cost impact, is it really worth it? And if, if there's a way that we can achieve your goals, otherwise, that is probably more timeless in some ways. We want to explore that, we want to bring those designs to your attention. We've already demonstrated, you know, some of our graphic capability and modeling, it's, our industry is all about being visual and explaining that to you. So we can bring that to you in a computer, have you walk through the space, and see what option A, B, and C work. So really, again, I'd like to stress, our process is highly collaborative. We have to, to answer that, we have to hear from you. We need to understand your needs again, and again, through our due diligence as designers and architects, to give you options, that you select what's best for your school.
So I'll wrap up that question. Probably one of the takeaways is, I think everybody thinks back to the schools of the 1970s with the open classroom concept, that frankly, was, did not, was not successful. And so today, I think that's a large lesson that's taken away by architects, and I know from, from our team, is, we want to find out, what is unique to Pensbury? What do you want your high school to be? This is, this is not us bringing in trends, whether, you know, statewide or nationally, we bring those as examples, for instance, in visual listening exercises, but we bring those forward to then determine what, what is best for your community. Do we involve a collaborative, you know, open collaborative area, or a learning stair, things of that nature? But then we do have to have the discussion, okay, how is this going to be used for the next 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years in this community, so that we're not overbuilding, or creating space that is not used by you? So. It's a little contrary to what we did for the proposal. You asked us to, to present a full design, so you could see our capabilities, but really, we see ourselves going back to square one, and starting over to build the overall program with you, and then the final design that, that meets your, your expectations. That's also why I think John maybe struggles a little bit on some of the budget discussions, because there's a lot of flex, and a lot of unknown at this time. You may actually end up with a more efficient building that's smaller in square footage. In that case, we might revise the fee, and bring things down, because it's a smaller scope project, project that's more efficient. And those are all discussions we want to have with you.
So, building on something similar to what Mr. Prokopiac said, the building design in your proposal, I'm curious how many times you've proposed this basic building design for other RFPs? And if you have, how many times you've built a variant of this design?
So the design that our team came up with was completely unique to this proposal. We have a core belief that the building and site, and the school district are uniquely tied together. So when we looked at it, the team, we went through the RFP in significant detail, understanding some of the things, your core values as a district. We do get on your website, we look at, you know, what your, your mission goals are, and things like that. That's really the starting point for our design beyond the walls and the architecture. The architecture is secondary, it reflects, it should, and it, and for us, it reflects really the values that you have. That is really our goal. So that's our starting point. We understand, for example, we clearly understood that that path was sacred. There's a uniqueness to your culture in that. So we wanted to make sure, you know, in our site plan and our building, the way that the building sits on the site and interacts with all that parking, we wanted to not just keep that path, but enhance it for the school district. You know, our site plan showed a wider sidewalk for that path, with trees and lights, again. So that's a small component of a larger, really, our design philosophy. The rest of the school was based on understanding your residential neighborhood, where it's at, your site entry, all the different components that really go into, to make this a unique building specifically for your school district. And that doesn't just include the site, that includes the building program as well. We went through the program to understand, again, our, when, of the first interview we had, we wanted to make it clear that we vetted out, we went through your program, which is why we were purposeful of showing little rectangles that encompassed every single space in your building, to, for us to indicate to you, we understand the uniqueness of your program, and how we put that together and through your site.
One thing that I'd like to add, that is a reoccurring theme, the way we approached the design of a building this large, that we also looked at the other concepts developed. A building of this size and square footage and scale, when you think about Akido moving through this, this building, this Main Street concept that we've talked about, which is the backbone of the school, is critical in terms of how we organize the building. There's a safety and security layering, because that helps us separate the academic areas from the public spaces. But when you also think about a student leaving, the travel distance is critical. And also that you have a sense of place, that no matter where you exit a core area of the building, you're arriving at the Main Street. So there's visibility, there's the social aspect of it. So what we do reoccuringly on our concepts is try to make sure that we don't have building masses with circuitous corridors and courtyards, and try to get the building compact, so it can be organized around a wayfinding element, that students always will know where that Main Street and that student hub of activity will be located. So from a building organizational perspective, buildings of this size, we do have a certain preference to achieve that type of organization. But this design is unique to any building that we've ever done, and hopefully for, for your district.
Thank you.
My questions have just been covered.
So, just for the record, I'm going to say that I'm not totally comfortable with this whole process, and that's because there's a committee that decided these things. And I don't know who the committee is, I don't know how they were picked, I don't know what the parameters were, I don't know what their, you know, what their, you know, are they engineers, are they contractors, are they accountants on this, the committee? I don't know. And I'm not casting aspersions on a committee, because I think it's important that we have community feedback, and we get feedback from the kids. But kids were put on this decision-making process when they should have probably been a focus group. And I guess, when I look at your designs, my question is, how do we address building needs versus building wants? Because if I sit five, 16 to 18-year-olds here and say, I'm going to buy you all a car, what do you want? They're not going to take the practical, affordable, budget-friendly car that's going to get them safely from point A to point B, that's going to be low cost of maintenance going forward. They're going to pick the bells and the whistles, and quite frankly, I don't think we can afford bells and whistles. So I just need to know how you address building needs versus building wants in your process. It's one of my questions.
Sure. So again, I think the last time we met, and again, I'll reiterate, we very much see our role, once a board establishes a budget, one of the things that we think we do very well is listen, but we don't, we only take direction from the board. The board is in charge of the scope of the project and the budget. Our role is the architect, who manages all the consultants, all the engineers, the civil engineer, and all those disciplines. When they get feedback, as Jeff suggested, if we hear feedback or suggestions about something, our role is to say to you as a board, we think we can accommodate that, but it's your decision, it's not the architect's decision. How you build that committee is very important. This is a high school project, it's shocking how much the kids have, the kind of input that they can provide as the user. Faculty and staff are super critical, this is their work environment, how the community uses the building. But we would, I would put that to the board, it is for you to determine the makeup of that committee, it's our job to manage that process. Jeff reminded me, as we were coming here this evening, that Chambersburg High School was probably our first big entry in 2008 into a half a million square foot high school, 2,500 kids. That was a 70-person committee that that district chose to put together for us to coordinate. That was a lot. That was a lot. But we've worked with all different sizes, and ultimately, that project was successful. And again, you should become familiar with the process of us coming back to the board with suggestions. We don't want to say, well, we're past schematic design, we can't entertain that anymore. Jeff's example of what we learned through the community meetings at State College. There was a desire to change the program, the board supported it, we made the redesign. But not without consent and direction of the board. So we'll do that in the form of presentations, we'll come with options. We're not going to say, you need to tell us what you want us to do. Our job is to help you with the decision-making process, and give accurate cost. Obviously, we'd be working closely with Dewey, to determine what the value of some of these things might be. Ultimately, the nature of a lot of those questions are involving building consensus. How are we building consensus and momentum to the thousands of decisions that have to be made that influence the project? In a public meeting, one of the things that we very much are proponents of is, we speak on your behalf. As Arif said, we need to understand what is unique and important to you. If there's a third rail, we need to know what that is. Because when we're presenting your project, we're representing the, the board, the administrative team, and it needs to be correct, it needs to be accurate, but ultimately, we're trying to build that consensus. So communication is the common denominator of how we would exchange those ideas, and bring them back to the board for direction.
Okay. That was, that was my first question. And again, for the record, I'm not saying that community involvement is not important.
Sure.
It is. And feedback of the kids and the staff, obviously, to me, is very important. And I would like to know if any of our maintenance staff was on that committee, because when we're going to start talking about HVAC and things like that going forward. But at the end of the day, I'm the one who took the oath of office, that swore about fidelity and fiscal responsibility. So I have to make sure for my public that while the community may want these things, are they things that we need and can afford? Because we owe it to the kids, to have a clean, modern, healthy building that's going to be modified into the future, like our math and our science rooms, they have to be able to grow with technology, okay? And that was my question for that. But the one question I did want to ask you specifically is, you brought up how you assisted State College on a referendum with community support, and can you explain the process of how you were able to gain that community support?
Sure. First and foremost, I think the credit has to go to the school district. That board worked tirelessly, and the superintendent, I'd encourage anyone to reach out to Dr. O'Donnell, I think he's currently at Downingtown. I think it was a very clear path that the board had set for us, and it was a unique contractual arrangement, where we were only hired for the schematic design effort of the project, and were only authorized to move forward if the referendum had passed. So that was actually a contractual requirement, the first time that we've ever seen anything like that. Jeff and I had worked very closely with the board. We had a educational planner onboard, and developed a schematic design after going through many options, build new offsite, add, renovate, hybrids, and so forth. And the board was guided through a decision matrix that we helped develop, to very specifically identify areas of concern, and see how the board measured each one of those categories. That helped arrive at the option. And then, as we went through the design process, it was a series of public meetings that we would go through in this type of setting, probably a 15 or 20-minute presentation, many times through the process. After the presentation, Jeff was going to one corner of the room, Arif to another, I another, Tracy, and so forth. And each, there was administrator with us at each quadrant, if you will, and there was a big letterboard, and someone was taking notes about what were the kinds of the kinds of questions the community was asking, whether it was building, program, site, budget. And those notes were collected and provided to the board, which we sorted through. And, you know, at schematic design, you're not going to know everything about the interior of a science lab. That's design development. But it provided us with enough information where we heard loud and clear additional gymnasium space where we programmatically already had that met, but that was something that the community reacted to. The board was able to support it. So it was a series of meetings like that, probably half a dozen meetings with the community to show them the progress of the schematic design prior to it going to the actual vote.
Thank you. Yeah, I liked your design a lot. I just, you know, I just have to make sure that it's, it's things that we need and must have before we act.
It's, it's, you know, if this project were a $50 million project, that's still an issue. It becomes a bigger issue on the scale of this. But again, I think our philosophical approach is to design to the budget. So if we hear things that, we might hear something that's a great idea or good suggestion, we're going to want to talk about that, get direction from the administrative team and the board. And that's also the earlier question about alternates. There will be things that are kind of slightly in between needs and wants. Those are perfect candidates for alternates. Let's protect the base bit of the project. Let's make sure the program is met, the appropriate educational environment is provided, and let's bid that as an alternate. And if we get favorable numbers on bid day, then that's a board decision to say, "You know what? We do think there's value to this. It'll benefit the students. Let's add that to the project." So alternates are another way to evaluate those items.
And, and I'm sorry, I have one more question. Donna, can we let, make sure everybody else gets a chance to ask their questions?
Oh, okay.
You've asked a couple now.
I haven't asked any more than TR.
I'm going to see, Mike.
Okay. Okay. Because, because let's, I'm just going to say this. A week ago, when we asked these questions, these were questions that came from a committee-
Yes.
-that I don't know anything about. And the question that was fed to me wasn't even my question. I don't really give a crap about their site things, whatever they were doing. I don't even remember what my question was. This is the question I need to ask for my constituents because I run into them at funerals and at the grocery store. It's incredible.
I was hoping-
So this is my last question. Can you provide any assurances that the same over-budget costs that we're seeing right now at Charles Bame, I think Mr. Abrams said it went from 30 million to 42 million just now? Can you provide any assurances that the same over-budget cost increases won't occur on this project? How are you going to protect us from that?
I don't know the specifics of that exact project, but some of the things that we would, obviously, with having a construction management company with professional cost estimating onboard, we have the process to go through and reconcile things that we disagree about and how to design them in such a way to meet the budget. So during the design process, those items should be evaluated. Cost estimates need to be put to certain alternates. So you can't make a decision whether you're going to direct the architect to add something unless you know what the value of it is. So we have to be diligent about that. I'm going to say that our, our track record, we have 55 secondary schools in the last 10 years. We monitor costs throughout the tri-state area between Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Virginia. There's national data also that Dewey's very familiar with as well, in terms of cost escalation, to put escalation into those scenarios to protect you. I'll be honest, and I think everyone in construction would acknowledge, the pandemic had an unprecedented impact on things in terms of material availability, that things were not worth what they ended up being worth because you couldn't get it. That's something that we cannot crystal ball. But we can make sure that we are designing to the budget and we're checking the process along the way. Scope creep is the number one factor in a project this size. If you change the classroom square footage by 100 square feet on a building this size, you add 10,000 square feet to the building. So again, the communication of understanding and relaying back to you, we can do that, but we need to tell you what the cost impact is and then see if you want to proceed. All these items are underlined by good, solid communication and open communication.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
So can I just follow up with that? The Bame project is a, is a renovation. So we run into different things, whether it be asbestos or some other items we weren't anticipating. And our Pennwood project, we ran into that as well. So for, can you just share with, with us your experience related to change orders? Once we get the design done, once we start into construction, do you see a lot of change, change orders in new construction versus what you're seeing with, with renovations?
So that is clearly an advantage that you have. New construction change orders should really fall into very few categories. Subsurface conditions, things that we will do testing, we will analyze that. There'll be geotechnical engineers. But there is potential for other things to be discovered. That is, that is one variable. And then the second is the nature of design-related changes or omissions. Things that you thought were included in the project, that we did, we did not understand or perhaps omitted and did not include, that we now need to include, and that's at our cost to design that. But generally speaking, new construction, you should be targeting for, now, the national averages are quite high, but our, our track record is for very low change orders through the quality control process. Again, having a construction manager reviewing the design documents as you go, with the clash detection of the rabbit in a 3D environment, working with the engineering team will also mitigate those items. And renovation generally is a higher percentage of change orders and unforeseen things. Opening up walls and discovering there's a rainwater conductor that was not shown on any of the drawings, that no one had any knowledge. That is an unforeseen condition. But obviously, in new construction, the target should be to aim for very low percentage of change orders and dollar value. And contingencies will be set aside in the budget for those types of things. But again, I think our, our philosophy, this is not our budget, it's your budget. So our goal is, contingency is not there for the architects to expend. Contingency is there for things that we did not anticipate. And at the end of the day, that contingency remains and always remains the school district's financing. You may use that for another project. So I think being stewards of that in public education is particularly important.
All right. Just one other follow-up. We, we often are talking now about purchasing things for the, the two, two buildings. And we're also like, "Well, this can be moved." In regard to your experience in terms of trying to do that, is that, have you experienced that where you're taking, you know, a brand-new scoreboard, or building, or putting perithium boards in a lot of our schools, just moving that over? We're, we're saying, "Oh, well, we'll move that over." Does that make sense in regard to what you're trying to do in terms of building a new building?
Trying to think of, yes, there is a possibility, or there is a very strong capability to reuse equipment that you're purchasing. It does become a little difficult because we're very early in the game right now. And, but we have seen gymnasium equipment reused, scoreboards, things of that nature, you know, classroom furniture. You do need to be cognizant of simple things. We've seen examples of, you replace flooring, you bring chairs in from another building, and it doesn't have the right slides on, on the feet, and you scratch or damage the new floor. So you need to have those kind of conversations, and there may be changes out of materials. But you also need to be careful. This is your chance to really purge and, you know, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years of people collecting stuff in their classrooms and just expecting it that they're going to move it over to the new building. State College, one of my favorite stories is, a science teacher came in one day and very legitimately wanted to know when they were moving his pool table. He had had a pool table in his classroom for, that he was supposedly using for physics for the last 10 or 15 years. And the conversation was, "I'm sorry, that is not going to the new building." And that was not how we, we were, you know, and we're not designing buildings for specific individuals. We're really trying to be holistic because we're trying to plan a facility for 30 or 40 years. So we would sit down with you very early on, identify what can be reused, what cannot be reused in a new facility.
I think too, our engineering team would provide an honest evaluation that there's costs and warranty-related issues. And contractors don't particularly care to move a piece of equipment that they haven't purchased or installed. We're going to want to give you an honest assessment of, yes, that piece of equipment might only be seven years old, and there's another 15. But till we move it, it's stored and reinstalled, we're narrowing the cost. So we're going to want to use and bring some of the retail side of our experience where, when we work for a company like Cabela's or Bass Pro, they, they need to see the value. When we make a recommendation, it needs to be grounded in a financial decision. And if it's not there, or the payback isn't there, then we need to say that to you. If we think there's value, then absolutely, especially with equipment that's difficult to get.
Good evening. How does your firm address the, this is more about design, the concept. Okay? How does your firm address the potential conflict between creating a high school design that incorporates so much open space and the paramount concern for school safety? And then the second part of that is, can you elaborate on the strategies and considerations your firm employs to strike the balance between fostering collaborative and open learning environment while ensuring that high level of standard of safety for staff and students?
Sure. I mean, we have to stress, you know, as a, as a design firm, safety is always the top. It's a priority for us. So when we're laying out our floor plans, that's always in consideration. So a big part of safety, and Jeff touched on a few from, from our last meeting together, there are some principles we, we don't, we don't implement safety in design development. It starts on day one. So that's understanding, for example, your administration that's located right in front of the school main entrance. So they have, we use the term "eyes on the street." They have to have visibility to see who's coming for the building at all times. There is a controlled vestibule so that someone has no access. They have to go through the office and sign in. There is a button from the administration that, that closes panic doors throughout the school. So those panic doors are strategically located at key places throughout the building so that major population of students have security. So there's a few of that's in there. In terms of addressing open spaces, we always make sure, and Jeff had shared quite a few statistics, aid on an event of something bad happening, or bullying was an example they used, making sure administration and faculty's located. So there's always constant monitoring. Again, sub-levels of the building that are able to be closed in sections so that there is this whole tiered level of safety. Collaboration spaces, again, how that works with inclusive spaces, we talked about that the last time. Those spaces are always anchored by supervision. They're not there, we eliminate blind corners in our design. We don't like corners where students can hide. We always have glass through, either to, again, faculty or monitored stations, like maybe an assistant principal in a pod. So when we preliminarily did our building design, those things are integrated already, even in conceptual level. It's not something that we were willing to wait until, "Oh, schematic design or design development." We wanted to make sure it's a priority. So we had presented last time a bunch of dots based on collaborative environments. Again, I'd like to stress that those were implemented in our design from day one, again, with all that supporting safety and security measures as well.
I'd like to add to that. It's, it's always a balancing game. Again, I hold crime prevention through environmental design trained alongside law enforcement. And it's not just police. It's not just fire. It's bringing everybody together holistically and talking about, "Okay, how do we want to educate our students?" And we don't want to just be in locked-down classrooms. I think sometimes people, security-wise, that, that's the natural knee-jerk reaction. But when you sit down and talk about, the real goal is that this is a community building, and it's an open, inviting environment. John spoke about, one superintendent said, "I want the safety measures to be there, but I want it to feel a little bit like Disney World of, I know it's there, but I want it to be a friendly environment for the students so that we enhance the education." And we don't detract from that with, with the safety measures. There are different techniques. For instance, if you're trying to have an open collaborative area in the building, you might have locked-down doors to that entire sector of the building before you even get to the classroom. So it's not just the front door of the building, a security vestibule, and then the classroom door, which a lot of people unfortunately on the news talk about a lot. It's about a staged access control of having sort of, of the building, lockdown sectors of the building before you even, four steps before you even get to the classroom. So then, by the time you get to that classroom pod, it can be a more open, open environment for the students. We're incorporating things like laminated glazing. So again, you know, somebody might see a wall of glass, be concerned with that. But you have, essentially have the same safety as, as a block wall, but you have the visibility for, for, for counteracting bullying, which again, 40% to 60% of students are bullied in their school career. That's what we really need to focus on, is creating that environment where everything, essentially all spaces are being monitored, students feel comfortable, before you get to unfortunately, an event that is sort of on a national level. It's about creating that, that environment. And having those discussions with the different team members, whether it is the administration, the, the community members, the faculty, and then the different first responders, how you lay out that space. Because we have had those open collaborative areas, and a law, law enforcement officer comes in and says, "This is the last thing I want." But then we've actually seen different, different components within a law enforcement office say, "Well, wait a second. If we start to close this down, it changes the type of personnel that can enter this building." And what I mean by that is, a standard law, a standard officer cannot enter a building and clear a building unless he has lines of sight. In that case, you, you turn to a quick reaction team or SWAT team that has to be brought in to, to have the, the correct precautions to clear rooms if they don't have visibility. So in some cases, having those, that glazing is actually more effective for the safety of the building. So having those discussions early, back and forth, and then, but ultimately having a discussion with, what are you as a community comfortable with in your building? And if, if you say, "We don't want quite as much of that openness," then we can't, we, we react accordingly.
And I'd like to add to Jeff's comment. Clear circulation is key, not just for safety and security, but just for everyday use. Our plan has very clean lines of sight. Our, our corridors don't bend and have different angles. It's very straight. You can see almost to the end of that corridor. That way, students, in a case of emergency or security measures, know exactly where to go. And also, I'd like to bring to attention that one of our core values as a firm is, we always make sure that the majority of the students spend their time in the academic wings. So we like to make sure, as Jeff said, having a layered, like territorial reinforcement throughout the building, we feel like strongly as a firm that the academic wing should be located somewhere further away, far away from the, from the main entrance. So we would always enter through a more public space so that, again, there is this layered approach for someone to get to the major population of the school.
I do have a follow-up question. Just as I sit here, I'm struck by the amount of time that we'll be spending with whichever firm we decide on. So how do you build, how does your firm approach building trust and intimacy and that connection with the board and the committees that they're working with?
Well, I think the, the process that you've gone through, hopefully you have a sense of what it would be like to, to work with our team. I think it's, it could be something as specific as, as the fee in itself, that once our fee is set, I think you should feel comfortable that the recommendations that we're bringing are to the benefit of the project. That goes a very long way. I think how you see we handle public interaction, how we represent the board and the district as a whole on your behalf is, is very important. Those are the kinds of things that, when you get to a level of comfort, and, you know, I would encourage you to contact, you know, perhaps some of the superintendents that we work with, the largest projects at Penn Manor and State College, how we interacted with the public. We, we learned quite a bit from the referendum. That was a very vigorous process. But the interaction with the community and the trust was also conveyed mutually from the community when they knew that we were representing the district, we were hearing what they had to say. But they also understood, as they were speaking to us, "We're not the decision-makers. Our job is to bring that information back to the board." So that process of communication is where I think the core of trust stems from. And then, how problems are resolved is another very issue. A project this size will have curveballs. There'll be issues- There'll be issues with schedule, what are needs and wants. And having that open discussion about what we think we can accommodate, we don't want to just say we can do all of those things and then on bid day, everyone's stunned. It's to say, we can do that, but we think as a precaution, we should develop that as an alternate. So all of those different facets show the depth of our team. I think as you've, hopefully you've gotten a sense of our ability to speak publicly, to convey, you know, half a million square feet of concept that we started designing in early January, also speaks to our skill and I think our ability to represent you as a district.
We're also very careful and selective of the team that we do bring forward to you. John spoke about our level of experience. I would reiterate, reach out to Dr. Sirianni. She's in our proposal for Solis Cohen Elementary School. And I can remember, it was about a four-year process, and towards the end, she said, she looked over and said, Jeff, you and me are the only ones left. We are very careful that we don't move team members in and out of a project. It's very critical that the design team carries the entire way through construction. It's not just having a great design process, but what you really remember is the building being built at the end of the, and whether it was successful, whether change orders were low, things of that nature. How do we achieve that, both with having that staff that continues through the process? It goes beyond, really what you're not seeing here tonight, is the culture that we have in our office and that we've developed over the years, and how we do maintain people 30 years, 25, 23 years. I'm an example of that. In 2003, I was activated to be sent to Iraq. And instead of, you know, the office, you know, sort of pushing me away, they brought my family in. I had just been married. They paid my entire salary for a year when I was gone. They were not obligated to do that. They built a sense of loyalty in me, 2003, so that's 19 years ago, that will stick with me for the rest of my life and has the reason I've stayed with the firm, that it's more of a family-oriented process. So then when we do have large projects, Light State College, High School, or the Solis Cohen Project in inner-city Philly, that we do have the key team members that are through the entire process. Because it can be very disruptive to you to have your project manager, your key person, switch out, you know, whether halfway through the design or when you cross over to construction, things of that nature. You need to build that trust so that you can reach out on a moment's notice and get an answer or get a clear discussion about budget, which some of you discussed this evening, and know that you're getting a straight answer.
I'm going to ask a question on behalf of Linda Polsky, who couldn't be here tonight. My question is two-part. What is the firm's process in the selection of the lead architect and the rest of the design team? Will our board have any input? And in the event of a lead architect or design team change, will our board be involved in the replacement and selection process?
Jeff didn't know that question was coming up when he answered it.
Whoops.
So one of the things that we've often done is actually place names in the B-101 agreement. We're comfortable to make the commitment that this is a significant project. It's the biggest project this district will do in the next 50 years. Our staff and our turnover and the amount of people that we have, hopefully we've spoken to, even the three of us that sit here with the years of experience working with the firm, we have not made a significant change on any staffing of a project. But yes, you are the owner. You are the client. You would have say. There are circumstances, when he got called to Iraq, that are unique, but that's not the culture of our firm. We have a very low turnover. We're up to almost 80 staff. And the way we select our staff and the team that sits here is because we know the level of complexity and a level of effort that's necessary for a project this size. So this is the senior staff, and there are many more. I think I mentioned earlier, sometimes when we would go to the design development meetings, we're bringing four, five, half a dozen interior designers. You cannot afford on a project of this size to have one meeting back-to-back, back-to-back, back-to-back. We need to break out in four groups, and each interior designer is meeting, someone's meeting with the science department, performing arts, music and art. And that takes a lot of depth, not to mention, this is a business that we are all in as well. How do you stay focused on ensuring you're meeting your clients' expectations? It's having a deep bench. It's having an experienced team. And again, that communication, if anything should occur, that it does not jeopardize the project in any way.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, we don't have time to go around again. That is our hour. So we appreciate all of your answers, and that's been very helpful. And thank you again for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. It's a significant project that we hope to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to adjourn for 10 minutes before we start the next round. We're calling the meeting back to order. Thank you for coming out tonight. Welcome back. Thank you for agreeing to come back for a second round of interview questions. We're going to go around the room again, and board members will be able to ask a question and then ask a follow-up clarifying question. We hope to get around the room. We'll try to do what we did the first time for consistency, but Linda's losing connection, so we are going to ask her question first.
So I'm asking a question on behalf of Linda Polsky, who is online but unable to speak. So the question, are you ready? What is your firm's process in the selection of the lead architect? Also, what is your process for the rest of the design team? And will our board have any input? Part two of this is, in the event of a lead architect or design team change, will our board be involved in the replacement and selection process?
There we go. Sorry. Yes, the answer is yes to all of those things. And thank you again for having us back tonight. Good to see everyone. When we're selecting the lead team, obviously last time we were here, we had a larger group. You saw the larger team. The core group is myself and Laura and Mark. Eric Gianelli is my partner. He's the other half here of KCBA. So we're the ones that you're going to see day-to-day all the time. I'm the one that is very much involved early on in the design process. We typically don't switch people out, certainly voluntarily if something happens. You would absolutely be part of that process. You'd be free to interview any of our staff, anyone else that may come around. You would absolutely have input to this. This is your project. This is, we want to be your team. So it's got to work well in a collaborative environment. We have to be uncomfortable with each other, so you guys would absolutely have input on that matter.
Excellent. Thank you. So my question is...
Madam President, can we ask that conversations not, that there would not be any crosstalk?
Absolutely. This is a working meeting, so if you do need to...
...however I want. I'm not interrupting you guys. We're not speaking loudly.
You actually are. You can hear us.
Good, Josh. You've got super hearing.
I'm going to hear these presentations.
Good.
We would like to hear the presentations.
We're all here pretending to be men before you're shaving yourselves.
I'd like to move on to my question. So we got the fees from both firms, and there's a substantial difference in the fees. Your fee comes in less than the competing firm, and we just want to know how you can provide the same value at a lower fee.
Well, we're very comfortable with the fee that we provided because we just did this at two other high schools. We just completed Lower Moreland. We just completed Avon Grove. So we know the effort it takes to put into all those things and provide all of the services that we promised. We talked about endless meetings, no limit on meetings. We want to make sure that we gather as much input from everyone. So we're not that far away. We're able to get here. Again, you know, we're working with you guys on other projects, so we're here quite a bit. We want more meetings. So that's not ever going to be nickel-and-dimed or added to. We would never do that. At Lower Moreland and Avon Grove, the fee was the fee. We never went back for additional services. We don't think that's the right way to run a project and to earn your trust. So we are very comfortable with the fee we have without missing out on any of the things that we've promised. And again, we think the success of the project is based on a lot of collaboration and a lot of meetings. So all of those things will be certainly included within our fee.
If I can add something, if you...
Just jump in there on the microphone.
We've been a proud partner with, we've been a proud partner with Bucks County Community College as well, Central Bucks. So we love to have you contact them. And over the last 20 years, we've been with them, and I think it's a straightforward process that we have in our billing that we don't pursue additional fees. We would love to have you contact them.
Thank you.
I'll just stick to the fee theme. Is your fee fixed or does it change based on square footage or the cost of the construction and all?
Yeah, typically the fees are based on time and how much time it takes. So we know the program that you guys put together, we helped develop that program, we actually know it very well, that arrived on a building of a certain size. We think we're a little bit on the lower end of that size, again, because every dollar matters, every square foot costs money. So we want to make the best building that we can fit all of that educational program that you desire in the smallest package. So those hours are ready for a building of that size. You know, between 475, I think, and 500 was the range. We're at like 480, 485. So again, we're on the smaller end of that. Absolutely, we can do that. Now, if you guys add an ice hockey rink or something to the side of the building, okay, that might change a few things. But no, I mean, within reason and within the scope that you've provided, again, we're very familiar with the scope, we're very familiar with the site, that fee covers it. So if things, you know, a square foot goes up or down a little bit, we're fully ready for that and expect that.
Just to clarify what you said, the, I understand the scope thing, but does your fee depend on the bids itself, how much cost of the construction is finally?
Yeah, I mean, it's based on the time it takes us to do those things. So if the cost of that building goes up, right, if inflation continues, that doesn't affect our fee. Our fee that we provided is saying we're getting started in the near future. We're building a building of that size and this magnitude. We're very comfortable that that fee covers that cost for that program and that size building, regardless of inflation or additional costs.
Do the materials used affect the cost, like your fee?
Do the materials affect our fee?
Yes. So you went from 1/4 to another, and there's a much greater cost for the 1/4 than the other. Does that affect your cost at all?
No. And in fact, it was something that Laura had brought up before, kind of representing our interior design department. We'll look at materials to make, and our variety of materials, to make sure that they are durable and they last long and they're cost-effective. Oftentimes, there's bidding alternates for materials as well. We're not going to charge extra for that. Some groups might. We certainly don't. That's us making sure that it's durable, documenting it that way, and making sure that that's an option that you have on bid day to kind of choose those materials and things like that. So, you know, the color blue is no more expensive than the color yellow. You know, wood grain, you know, woods, materials and things like that to try to bring in natural materials into the building. These are all things that we expect. I mean, you saw our design, you saw the videos and things like that that we provided. That's what we're expecting, is a variety of materials that would be included.
So let me just clarify. Sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but just to clarify, so like in the RFPs, they come up with a percentage based on, but that's sort of like engineered backwards basically, based on the time that you consider. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a straight percentage? It's sort of...
No, we were looking at the time. This is a big project, so it's going to take some time. But again, we've just done this. We, and again, Lower Moreland and Avon Grove, both have actually hired us back since then for other projects in their district.
And the other question I ask is the, so when we look at schools that were built 10 or 20 years ago, and we see things that aren't in use that were the thing that was put into schools at that time when it was built, and that's newer schools as well as older schools. And those things all have a cost. How do you take that out? Because obviously, like, we're trying to build a building that will be here, you know, basically, you don't want to keep doing buildings every 20 years or 10 years or whatever. You want something that's going to be built to last. How do you take that, sort of the fads out of it?
Yeah, flexibility and adaptability. Knowing that 20 years from now, there's going to be something new, right? There's going to be something that we don't think of. There's going to be something new that, you know, California invents. So we want to make sure that the spaces that we have have the right size, have the right volume, are used in materials that could be adapted over time. Sometimes walls move, sometimes they close. You know, drywall partitions and things like that in between classrooms, that's a partition that could come down pretty easily without, you know, any type of a major move. We want those spaces to be flexible. We will listen to you when we did this with Terry and Reggie when we were talking years ago about that program. You know, what are some programs that you're thinking of that can be in shared spaces? And that's a good test. We want a TV studio and an esports room. Okay, that doesn't necessarily have to be two different rooms. It could be part of the same kind of suite. Those are things that can kind of intertwine. Then if TV changes, if an esports studio changes, we've got a lot of technology in there, we've got a lot of data, we've got a lot of power. Great, let's change it into a robotics studio. We have the space, we have the amenities and things like that to change that over time. As you started to say that, actually, one of the first things that popped in my head was lockers. Back in the day, we had lockers for everybody. The last couple of high schools that we've seen, there aren't lockers for every student. That was their choice. Students were coming back saying, we're not using lockers. We don't necessarily need them. So let's have some, let's have sports lockers and things like that. But that's something we can work out with you guys, because lockers are expensive. So that can be something where you say, all right, let's provide enough for a third of the students, half the students. That's a way to bring that back down, students, the cost down. Students can sign up for one if they'd like. But that may be, you know, back in, of course, I've used a locker. Everybody used a locker back then. Well, maybe they're not, maybe kids aren't using lockers now, especially now that a lot of things are on computers. They don't have 15 different, you know, 20-pound books that they got to carry around. So those are the types of things that cost money that could be pulled out. And certainly, flexibility and adaptability of all of those spaces for the inevitable change in 20 years is a cornerstone to the design.
The building design in your proposal, how many times have you proposed this building design and how many times have you built a variant of this design?
This? This is brand-new. We don't do cookie cutter schools because that might be good for somebody else, but it's not good here. You know, we love Avon Grove because Avon Grove loves Avon Grove. We love Lower Moreland because they really love that school. We want to design a school for you. So again, in our fee, there's no pulling it out of a drawer and starting over. This is a building specifically for you. As we talked through that design a few weeks ago, we took a lot from the walkthrough that we did, the sit-down with, when you brought in all the architects. And there were a lot of people from the community, students, fathers, talking about what they thought was best. We took a lot of that and we designed a new building. We sat here last week, TR asked, you know, hey, what if I want to move the front door someplace else? Okay, let's do that. So we're ready for options and, you know, some changes to things that we may want to try differently for that. But we've never done that one before. Now, there's components, we know how to do a science lab. We know the components of all of the things. We've done this, 60 major school projects throughout our career and the history of our firm. So we know how to build these, but the designs are always unique to the school district to make sure we're meeting your needs. This is your building. This isn't your variation of somebody else's building. We want to work this to make this the best for you guys and your community.
And that's what makes it fun and interesting for us, too, not doing the same thing every time. That couldn't get old.
Thank you.
No further questions from me.
So I just have a few questions for you. I'll ask one or two. The first question is, can you provide any assurance that the same over-budget cost increases we're seeing at Charles Beam won't occur on this project?
Yeah, so at Beam, as the project kind of progressed... Yeah, so at BAME, as the project kind of progressed and grew, and we'll say lagged in time, the cost kept increasing. So as that happened, the budget was adjusted and the board was informed, hey, the budget's going up, the budget's going up, the scope is increasing, things like that. When those bids came in, we were able to adjust with some contingency that was already available. I know certainly, you know, the building at this point is 60, 70% complete, and we've used just a fraction of the contingency allowance that was put in, put in place. We talked about that last week, about making sure the project total, total project cost is fixed. And that's what we want to be under. If construction costs come in high, and sometimes that crosses a line, all right, well, now we got to take some money out of that contingency. So we're really proud of that building and really glad that the work that this team, and a lot of the credit has to go back to the school district for so much collaboration during that design time and understanding during construction time as well. That's one of the reasons that that building is doing so well under construction now, to make sure that the project budget stays on budget.
My second question is about, in your design, sustainability was a big thing. And I think we all want sustainability, and we all want to be careful with our planet. I don't know how else to put it, so, but we all want sustainability. But I felt like some of the things were clouds in the sky that are just not affordable. And I'm a little concerned about things being so specific. For example, we had a boiler that was LED, right? And it, the parts were so specific that they only came from Brazil, and then we couldn't replace them, and we had to replace the boiler, right?
Yeah, LEED certified.
LEED certified. So as well, as much as I want sustainability, how do you address building needs and must haves versus building wants in your process?
It's a great question, because we've seen that as well. Something that's so sophisticated that no one can operate. So there is a balance there. And our team, along with our consultants, understands that. So it's got to be something that's affordable within the budget on day one. It's got to be something long-term, that's durable, that's not going to break right away. And it has to be something that you can operate. If they have all kinds of efficiency things on it, no one understands it and just overrides everything, well, then you're not gaining those efficiencies. So our team with Jeff Magic from Snyder Hoff, when you met last week, we build schools. We've been doing this for a very long time. We know the equipment that is cost-effective, energy-efficient, and manageable, that it doesn't take a rocket science to be able to operate those. Because to your point exactly, if things are kind of overwritten, now you're just spending money on things that you're not going to see a real cost, a return on investment.
So one of the things that we do is, we would take your team to some other facility so you could see how some of these systems work, and how they, if you liked the way they work. We did this with Bucks County Community College. When they went to geothermal, we took them to several jobs that had it. There were variations of that geothermal system, but they got to see it. And then they, then the head of facilities there kind of knew how you wanted to set it up for their campus. We don't really force, we don't push an agenda to that. We want to make sure you like that system. So we want to make sure you see it in play and how it's used, and meet the guys that run it. And then you can make that decision for your community.
Yeah, sustainability is very important, but it has to meet your budget and meet your needs and be-
And it has to be practical, because some things weren't in your design, so.
No, those are the things that we'll work through with you to make sure that those are all things that everyone understands and is excited about including in the building.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
What was your question?
The want and the needs question, I just asked that. And I just wanted to, and yeah, and I just wanted to point out that there was a list of things that were not practical in their design. Okay.
All right. So just to follow up on Donna's question, related to change fees for BAME versus, so new construction versus renovation, and what you, once we figure out what the design is and we're ready to go, what's your, do you anticipate a lot of change fees and stuff like that?
Our fee does not change, so-
No, not your fee?
He's talking about cost.
Cost for construction, once we've decided what the design is.
No, and working with budgets, you know, once we know the design of the building, the size of the building is the biggest driver of the cost. Site's going to be what its site's going to be, demo is going to be what demo is. The building size is the biggest driver. So once we know what that is, we're able to look at construction costs, construction costs in our area. There's a lot of buildings going up constantly, so we're constantly watching how, what's cost per square foot was that school, and how much cost per square foot was this school. So there's other projects that we can relate to and always make sure we're looking at that budget. And then there's contingencies. There's always a design contingency early on. We may add something. Okay, you want to add a little something there? That's fine, that's covered within the contingency. Let's make sure that that's within the budget for bid day. Everything comes in on budget, great. Once construction starts, there's another pocket of contingency. That's what we were talking about at BAME, because something will come up. There will be something in the site, there will be something that we walk through and go, hey, I wish that was wider, larger, you know, maybe let's try something different there. Those are all budgeted. That way, again, to the point of total project cost, to make sure that we're staying within that and more often than not under that. So we're very conservative about the budget throughout design, making sure that there's available monies there in case inflation goes a little bit faster than anybody thinks. We have some time during that design process in case it goes, starts going a little high, go, hey, we got to start pulling things down. Sometimes we have to be the bad guy and say, hey, listen, we can pull those things down. But a very conservative budget is the key to that, to make sure that there's money available during construction and anything that may change during design.
And if I could add, we do a lot of testing, too. So like, the site is where a lot of variation happens. You don't know where all the rock is, you don't know where unsuitable soil is. But we do our best to at least identify that. We'll have test, we'll have the testing done as much as we possibly can. You can't test every square inch of your site. But that's where you at least get an idea of where those cost items may pop up later. You know, we even did that at BAME as far as the underground piping, because we know it's a 55-year-old building. And, you know, we suggested some more tests so that we found out that at least a decent portion of the ones that needed to be replaced, we identified before we went out to bid. But again, it's an old building, so it's hard to tell, you know, every pipe that's going to go bad.
One of the other things we've been talking about is that we have to purchase some Promethean boards for math classes now. We can't wait till a new school. And we've said, oh, we're going to be able to reuse those. Philosophically, does that fit into building a new school? Have you experienced that, where we need to move, we like to move equipment, a scoreboard or other things?
We do owner-supplied equipment all the time. As long as you can identify it, we can locate it.
Yeah, it's a good, you still have three years of high schools in the old high school. So whatever needs to be fixed, whatever technology wants to be integrated, get it. Furniture, get it, great. If it can be moved, buy it. Maybe not renovate something at this point, because that building doesn't have a long life to go. But we've done that quite a bit. As long as we know what the technology is, we go, all right, it's that board, that's fine. We're going to put power here, data there, we're going to put it over a whiteboard. We know where it's going to be. We have to design that if you were going to buy it anyway. And then that gets factored into the budget cost. Hey, that's a little less furniture that we need to buy, because we're going to buy it now, and then move that into the new building. So, yeah, I mean, it's a very good point that you made. You have three years of operating those schools until you're cutting the ribbon on something. Anything that you need to purchase to make those three years as successful as possible, go ahead and we'll work that in and make sure that that fits within the building. That's pretty common.
Good evening. I'm going to move away from the budget and go back to the concept design. How does your firm address the potential conflict between creating a high school with a lot of open space with safety? So can you elaborate on the strategies and consideration you employ to strike a balance between fostering that collaborative learning environment while ensuring the highest standards of safety and security for all students and staff?
Yeah, so one of the key and very first things that I learned through all the safety seminars and lectures and things that I've attended was establish a perimeter and keep visitors or unwanted people out. Know where the perimeter of that building is, secure the perimeter of that building so that unwanted people can't get into the building. And any time that you may have an outdoor space, make sure that there's a clear line of a fence, something like that, a small gate, something that goes across that says, here's a line where children are, here's a line where you need to stay away from. Because we want to have kids outside. We want to have that ability for students to get out and see everything. One of the things I thought worked really well with our design is where we put the building and moved that a little bit closer to hood and kept all of the cars on the other side. So there shouldn't be anyone walking behind the building on the hood side. I think the facade there is very, very nice to drive by and see that. It's not, there's not like a sea of parking in front of it and big lights on and things like that at night. Just when you drive by, you're just going to see this beautiful academic facade. On the other side is where everybody's coming in. So if somebody's walking up to the back of the building someplace, that's a visual sign for a security officer and a camera to go, hey, wait a second, why are all these people walking around in the back of the building? That's not right, that's not what should be there. That's a visual indicator of a security issue. Everybody should be coming from the front of the building into that one singular entrance. You saw courtyard spaces that are enclosed by the buildings. I don't know if you did the walkthrough at Avon Grove. You actually had two of them, kind of flanked by the other side. It's great. Kids are in there all day long. There's building wrapped on four sides. There's nowhere to get in there without being already in the building. So having that, having multiples of those, sometimes if it's enclosed on three sides, like I said, there's still kind of a gate on the other side to kind of, again, establish that perimeter and keep other people out, make sure the kids don't run away, too. But that way, it's secure. That way, you can have that space, you can have that interaction, and we make sure that we're doing so in a secure environment. Like I said, I do lectures. Actually, I'm speaking next week at a lecture for the state about school safety. We can talk about that all night long. And certainly, bringing that to the team, I think, is a great attribute for us. And one point we wanted to bring up last week as well was, and then teaching that to everyone afterwards, that policy and training, you're going to have a brand-new building with different spaces, right? You're going to walk in and see glass. Oh, my God, glass, that's not safe. Well, yeah, it is, actually. And let me explain why. So we do that with teachers and students. At the beginning of the year, we walk everybody through, here's why that's open, here's why that's safe, here's the protocol if you're in an open space and a lockdown is called on. You saw the one little learning stair there outside the auditorium. In a lockdown, don't stay there. But you go to the library that's right next to it. So in practice, the librarian knows, hey, in a lockdown, I got to look out, make sure there's nobody out here. If there is, hey, guys, come in here, that's the room that I can lock, and we all lock down in place. That's training, that's policy, that's understanding what to do and practicing those drills. So all of those things are thought of, understood, and developed with your staff and your students so that there's a clear understanding of safety measures that are in place in the building.
And your SROs will usually give us some input and say they don't like this or that, and we'll adjust.
One final question from me. I don't know if anyone else does, but it struck me as we're going through this process that we have to become really close with the firm that we choose. How does your company approach fostering a trusting and collaborative relationship with the board and the stakeholders?
Yeah, again, we work for you. This is, just like the students, and this is your building. You guys are the community, you're elected officials. I'm an elected official in the town that I live in, so I know how that works on kind of both sides of that table. This building is yours. If there's something that somebody doesn't like, or goes, you know, that's a little too much, okay, let's change that. Let's come back and provide two or three other options to try to achieve the function that we think is valid for that idea, but maybe we do it in a different way. Okay, not a problem. You know, we had a lot of interaction with the board back in BAME when we were going back and forth with the design and what should look like on the front. Remember, you know, the old front door was off the state road. You said, well, that's not the best idea, so let's put something new on the side. That's where we're going to capture everything. We did talk a lot about safety, and that was a big measure to that. Here's a little bit of something that's sticking up, saying, hey, I'm the front door, now I know where the front door is, instead of everybody that kept trying to get in the auditorium side over there. And we walked everybody through that. And we showed videos, and we showed, we explained all that. Coming back to the board multiple times, just like we would with the community, is important. You know, you guys are taxpayers, too. So, yeah, we absolutely work for you. Your input is very, very valid, and we want to hear that so we can make sure that we're building the building that you desire.
To jump in on this, KCBA early partners well with our clients. And one of the things that we do is, even when the building's done, we're still around. For 20 years, I've been going back to Bucks County Community College. They've gone through three or four presidents, they've gone through other facilities, but they always come back. And we help them out through their buildings and their other buildings, because we have a lot of the information. And so that, I mean, once we're a partner with them, we're a partner as long as, as long as we're all-
As you'll have us.
Yeah.
And you'll have us.
It's wrong. So it doesn't just goes for the projects, it's going to be for the duration of the building.
And just, I guess, one other perspective on that is, you know, we have our design team, you'll have a design committee. And however you choose to set that up is what we'll work to. And they'll communicate back to you. If you want to come back, if you want us to come back and see the whole board, that's something. If you want to work with a group of three, you know, however you see fit is, we're adaptable in that regard.
Just kind of follow on in a way, but like, how comfortable are you with the budget we have put together so far, and given the design you're proposing, right? Is it going to fit that budget, and how are you going to track and manage that?
Yeah, we're, again, we're really proud of the design we came up with for a number of reasons. We think, you know, there's, again, it's all driven by educational spaces, making sure that there's functionality and practicality in every corner, every hallway, all of those areas. We like that the building, we were able to accomplish that and do that in a, like I said, a smaller container. It didn't have to have, you know, big three-story, you know, triple-wide hallways and stuff like that. We were able to achieve what we think is important for a school, what we've heard working with your team in the past of what everybody thought was important. And we're anxious to hear your thoughts. And as I said last week, you know, we want to start over, let's start over. So this will meet your budget. This can meet all of the requirements that you're asking for us financially, all the requirements that the state puts on us as well. We're comfortable with that, but more importantly, you have to be comfortable with that.
Yeah, but can you clarify, my question's also control, right? As design changes, the committee comes up with ideas that may or may not increase cost, how are you going to track and manage that and involve us?
Yeah, again, like I said, sometimes we are the bad guy, and we have to say, hey, listen, that's a great idea, but now things are getting bigger. So let's try that, but maybe we have to trade that off someplace else. We're never going to show you something you can't afford. We're always going to show you something on budget. So that is paramount. If you can't afford it, then why are we drawing on it anyway? So as you're changing those things, there's always that thing in the back of our head, we have to meet your budget. We have to meet Act 34 requirements. Those things we're always going to check before we come back and say, hey, look, we changed that, what do you think of this idea? You know, there was a comment last time about the lobby, so we did this, what do you think? Those things are always checked before we're bringing things back to you.
So this doesn't just go to the bid. You know, this process goes all the way through construction, through all those items, you know, that could happen during construction. So oftentimes, we all talk about the bid and the outcome of the bid. That's just a part of it. You've got another 30, 30 to 36 months, and that budget has to still be maintained all the way through the entire project. We want to be clear on that. A lot of people just talk about that front part. It's what happens at the end that matters. So just want to make sure.
And then also during the design process, you know, there'll be checkpoints as far as cost estimates. Usually, we'll work with the construction manager that you have in place. And they'll, you know, that's kind of their watchdog job. You know, they'll tell us if things are looking thing, or if there's a spike in steel, and maybe we'll adjust a material or something along those ways. You know, it's a dynamic process. And predicting the economy now that's going to happen in a year and a half isn't always possible. So you have to be able to adjust and adapt.
And we do see bids, because we're obviously doing a lot of work ourselves. So we see how the market's reacting. So if we see something happening, we'll obviously inform you if that's affecting the budget, if there's a shortage or something. God forbid, we have another hurricane that takes some, something out in the Gulf where it affects the prices across the board. We're on top of these things as they happen, just as your construction manager would probably know as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I believe that is...
I think that's all the questions that were last, last time?
Yes, I believe that was...
Do we want to expand beyond that, given the time, or...
I have no further questions.
I think in the entrance of fairness, we're going to stick to the same questions so that...
Thank you.
...the interviews are comparable. Thank you so much for coming out and sharing your expertise, and we really appreciate this opportunity to really dialogue with you and ask you these questions.
No, appreciate it a lot, we're very excited for your project, good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconds.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Good night.